Well, good evening, everybody. It is seven o'clock on the dot and it is March 2nd, 2021. This is the city council formal meeting and I'm going to ask that we have roll call, please.
Burgess.
Here.
Memes.
Here.
Sally.
Yeah.
Taylor.
Here.
Teague.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Weiner.
Here.
All right. Well, welcome again, everyone. And our first item number two is a proclamation for International Women's Day and Women's History Month. Whereas the accomplishments and achievements of women were first recognized in 1977 by beginning the annual commemoration of International Women's Day and later in 1987 by doing the same for Women's History Month. And whereas women have shaped and continue to fill critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every aspect of life and provide more than half of our nation's workforce. And whereas women are recognized for their essential contributions in fields of science, technology, engineering, mathematics, law, medicine, social sciences, humanities, and the arts. Whereas March 8th is celebrated as International Women's Day around the world. Whereas the theme of International Women's Day 2021 is Women in Leadership: Achieving an Equal Future in a COVID-19 World. Whereas women stand at the front lines of the COVID-19 crisis as healthcare workers, caregivers, innovators, community organizers, and as effective leaders in Iowa City and around the world. Whereas the Johnson County Chapter of the United Nations Association of the USA and 20 community partners are making International Women's Day by honoring the Domestic Violence Intervention Program, Houses into Homes, and the Sankofa Outreach Connection, three local organizations founded by, led by, and serving women. Whereas these organizations will be recognized during a virtual community celebration of International Women's Day on Wednesday, March 10th. Now therefore, I, Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim March 8th as International Women's Day and the month of March 2021 to be recognized as Women's History Month in Iowa City and urges citizens to recognize and support the contributions of women in the COVID-19 world. And here to receive this is Barbara. Welcome, Barbara.
Hello. Thank you for honoring International Women's Day. My name's Barbara Badavenutz and on behalf of the board for the Johnson County Chapter for United Nations, we're excited to host that event you just talked about called Night of a Thousand Dinners. And yes, it is March 10th from 6:00 to 7:00. And we are excited to honor and celebrate International Women's Day with a lot of performers and other entertainment by honoring those three groups. And all the proceeds for this fundraiser will be going to the local food pantries in Iowa City, Coralville, and North Liberty and the UN World Food Program to sort of help offset all the COVID hardships that have been happening in our community today. And so if you would like, we would like to have you there. We invite you to the event if you would like to come. And if you're interested, it's on Eventbrite.com and you can look up Night of a Thousand Dinners. Or you can look at our website, JohnsonCountyUNA.org. Thank you.
Thank you. And celebrate International Women's Day and Women's History Month. All right. Could I get a motion to approve the consent? Well, we're at items three through eight, which is the consent calendar agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Remove, Taylor.
Second, Sally.
All right. And is anyone in the public that would like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand and I will call upon you. And we also ask that people keep their comments three to five minutes. If you're on the phone, press star nine and I will call upon you. I see one hand. Welcome, Nicholas.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Well, I guess my request must not have been approved because you just approved the consent calendar. But I was going, I had written you all a letter last week requesting that item 6D be removed from the consent calendar, but I guess that's moot at this point. But I will still explain why I wanted it to be removed. So item 6D was the, is the contract with Jesse Case, the facilitator who was hired for the Truth and Reconciliation Commission. The reason why I wanted it to be removed was basically because of the entire situation with the current TRC. And also after the events of last night and the interview with Mr. Case. I think you all need to be paying much closer attention to this commission that you created and to Mr. Case as its facilitator. I thought Commissioner Hamad actually made a really fantastic point, which is, well, basically to ask, why is the first monetary outlay from the TRC going to a cis-het white man instead of the people who are actually affected by white supremacist violence in our community? So that's a question you could have asked. You could also could have just generally explained your feelings on the absolute chaos that the TRC has become largely as a result of its current chair, who is probably going to lose her position as of Thursday if the votes on the matter remain the same. And so I guess just in general, I wanted to use that as sort of a jumping off point for y'all to, you know, express some concern about what's going on. But since it's already been approved, like I said, all I can do is explain why I had originally requested it. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public like to address this topic? Welcome, Mohammed.
Thank you for recognizing me, Mayor Teague. My name is Mohammed Traoré. I am a commission member of the Iowa City Truth and Reconciliation Commission. I am here today to say that while I do agree with the sentiment that the TRC has been a bit chaotic as of late, I would like to say that we are working very hard to ensure that the process going forward is a lot more smooth and that we can come to a consensus in terms of how the meetings are conducted. And we know that we may not always agree on all things. But at the end of the day, the main thing that matters is that we keep striving to come up with the best solutions possible for the most amount of people. And not only Iowa City, but those that come to visit Iowa City and the surrounding area. I'd like to cap off my comments by just saying that at this time, I do believe that the commission needs an extension in terms of the amount of time needed to come forward with a budget. We just yesterday finally got a chance to speak with the facilitator that is approved. And it just seems to me that having about two weeks from now to come forward with a budget that comprises a million dollars is far too much to ask without having proper community comment on what people in the community feel that the budget should also be going to. And I highly value the opinions of the people in the community. So I want to hear from everyone of all backgrounds. And I also think that we do need some kind of liaison or joint facilitator as well to assist Mr. Case because from what I heard last night, especially with Commissioner, what Commissioner Hamad had said, that it seems to me that someone that can truly reach out to the youth in the BIPOC community that is heavily trusted by that community and that is heavily related to that community in terms of the events they continually go to and not just having ideas of certain events they've gone to in years past. Someone such as that, such as Frederick Knoll or a Hansa Omar or someone else that is upstanding in the community to truly give this commission a great footing and to really change the image of how the public sees this commission and really helps the public to want to engage with us. And with that, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And Emily Roberts. Amelia, sorry. Welcome.
Thank you. You're okay. I would like to just second real quick Nicholas and especially Mohammed, especially his comments about bringing Fred Knoll in as a joint commissioner. Fred is someone that I grew up with trusting, that all my friends have trusted, that I know is very, very, very well-connected into the community and helped me get through things personally myself during some times in high school. So I do want to second that. The other thing I kind of want to bring up about the TRC meeting is the unorganization of it, of the TRC meetings. I think the unorganization goes hand in hand with the disrespect that myself and other public commentators have received kind of recently in every meeting, actually. Not only is it just like, kind of like a bad look for the first TRC commission in Iowa. I think it turns a lot of people away from public comment. The disrespect makes a lot of people just overall uncomfortable, I think. So it's, it's hard for people who might have, you know, some social anxiety or something like that to kind of jump into something like that. Luckily, I have pretty thick skin, so it's still something, but it's still something none of us should have to deal with every meeting. Another thing is like, I think two city council meetings, some people got in here and said that when I, before I had joined the TRC meetings for public comment that, you know, come to TRC, you know, bring these problems to TRC. And then when I do, I just get utterly disrespected and scoffed at, laughed at, you know, I mean, just stuff like that. That's just really unprofessional that we, I don't have to deal with when I come to city council meetings, which I appreciate. But we, we also need, I think designated times for public comment would be a really good idea. Like we have at city council meetings. If we are, if they are going to let certain members of the community interrupt and speak over and yell at people making comments like what happened to myself last night. Overall, it, it's just not a good look. And I would just appreciate some organization as well. I think a lot of us would. But I'm also just very concerned about, you know, certain, about certain commissioners like Hamad and Traoré and Ali being disrespected and silenced or muted. I just, I think the community doesn't appreciate that at all. And we just like to hear everyone's voices. These young voices are really, really important to represent the future of the city, something young people like myself are really, really care deeply about. But another thing I would like to bring up, I think this is the right time. That's completely separate from the TRC.
If it is separate from the TRC and actually from Jesse Case's contract, after this, there'll be an opportunity for the comment.
Cool. I'll say.
Thank you. Welcome, Harry.
Hi. So is this now the time that I should be talking about the hiring of Jesse Case or?
Yes.
Okay. So yeah. So from what I know, the plans are to pay this white pro policeman $4,000 a month for 19 hours of work a week, which comes out to $52 an hour about. And all I can think about is how all the people in this community that are already doing this work, all I can think about is how there are so many, how I, I just know so many young, passionate black and brown kids that are just like working for like $10, $11 an hour, risking their lives in a pandemic to like pay their rent and stuff. And then on top of that, doing all this anti-racist work for free. I just believe that there are people in the community that are, that are much more qualified to do this job and who are much more deserving of this position than Jesse Case. That's all.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address this topic? Please raise your hand. Welcome, Bailey. Yes, we can hear you.
Um, I guess I would just like to second what Harry said. I've heard a lot of displeasure from a lot of community members who are out here doing the work for free. And I just would be very disappointed if it would be a decision that you guys weren't willing to reconsider.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address this topic? CNN01, Council Discussion.
Yeah, Mayor, I just wanted to clarify for that item regarding the facilitator contract. The, the TRC had an opportunity to review that yesterday. And I see Stephanie on the call, but if we could just get confirmation on what their vote on that was? My, I listened in on the meeting and I thought it was eight to one favorable to the contract. Okay. So then of the nine commissioners, eight of them were, were favorable, right? Okay. Thank you.
That is correct.
Any other comments?
As a follow-on to Counsel Burgess is first, we are paying close attention. A number of us are paying very close attention. This is an incredibly important undertaking. The, and I also want, it's really important to me that we honor the process that has gone on in the TRC and the process of selecting Mr. Case and the process of approving the contract. There was, there was extensive conversation last evening, extensive questions asked. The, the issue of, the issue of compensating a facilitator is one that the council put in our resolution. So the, to me, when a commission, whether, whether it's our council or when a commission has, has voted, that's a result that I will respect.
And on those lines, I'd also comment that no commission, no board, even us as a council can accomplish anything if you continually revisit items over and over and over again. And one of those such items is the election of your chair, which you did in your first few meetings. Was, was elected by a fair vote and I, I just do not see any reason for you to, to change that.
Any other comments by counselors? Roll call, please.
Burgess.
Yes.
Memes.
Yes.
Sally.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. We are at item number nine, which is community comments. We welcome anyone to.
Excuse me, Mayor. Can we get a motion to accept the correspondence for 6B?
Absolutely. So sorry. Could I get a?
Second, ma'am.
Great. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any oppose? Motion passes seven to zero. We are at item number nine, which is community comment. And this is an opportunity for community members to address anything that is not on the council agenda. And we're going to ask that you keep your comments three to five minutes. Welcome, Amelia. Followed by Sarah.
Hi. So the other thing that I wanted to bring up that is completely separate from the TRC is the COVID crisis currently happening in Iowa City. I've seen pictures and with my own very eyes, people out at the bars, lines down the street, not social distancing, not wearing masks, many of who I believe to be students attending the University of Iowa, completely separate from, you know, the people that have been born and raised in this community that care a lot about the health of others. Last weekend, actually, so I work at a hotel downtown. And last weekend, tons of irresponsible parents flooded into Iowa City Downtown District, putting our community at risk. I think it was maybe like Mother's Weekend or Parents Weekend or something like that. This community houses my grandparents as well as, I believe, you know, I mean, tons of people in our community, grandparents, everyone's grandparents, you know. As, as I as well, as lots of others are very concerned about COVID getting even worse here, especially as it gets warmer out, which we, we all know we'll see. I'm aware of the, how horribly our governor has been doing things here. And I definitely, I definitely think Johnson County just really needs to step up and take more direct action towards this. Most of all, the times there isn't even anyone to enforce the mandates, especially as I see multiple Iowa City police officers oftentimes not wearing masks. Two of those times have been at my job twice in like from December to now, like a week ago. So it just is really, really concerning to me. Even, I mean, today I had a scare where luckily I got my COVID test back negative. And I hope I don't ever receive a positive one. But these things really, really give lots of people anxiety here as well as I'm probably people in the council. You know what I mean? It's just me and my grandmother both find this very concerning. Something we need to prioritize is the health of our community and I was, long-term Iowa City residents and not let people and businesses and especially the University of Iowa get away with putting actual Iowa City residents in danger and at risk. Yeah, that's all.
Thank you. Welcome, Sarah, followed by Nicholas.
Hi, Council. This is Sarah Barron from the Affordable Housing Coalition. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I want to raise something that came up at your work session, which is that in the month of February, many, many Iowa City households received a notice from the city that said that their water account was past due and that the city would be resuming its normal water operations, including shut offs, and that past due balances would be sent to a collections agency for collection. At your work session tonight, City Manager Jeff Ruin clarified that after those letters went out, the city reconsidered its position because there is going to be money available for past due utility assistance. And I believe you have plans to discuss next steps at a meeting later this month in March. Thank you very much for taking that step to wait while we wait for the federal resources to do their important work to catch people back up and make people more economically stable. I do however, have one more question or request of you, which is that for all of these water customers who received this notice, I think it's important that the city do its best to inform people that there is this pressing pause on the collections process because many households do not have enough money to pay this bill. And many households will attempt to borrow money or take on some kind of debt if they believe they have to pay this bill or get their water shut off. And so I think it is the city's responsibility to more clearly communicate with water customers about the, the pressing pause of this resumption of normal water service so that people have some time to make plans to participate in the new state funding program and do not pay a bill that they can't afford because they believe that their water is going to be shut off. Again, thanks so much for your attention to this issue. I hope very soon we will no longer have to talk about COVID's impact on the economic stability of our lower income households. But until that time, we're going to continue to push very hard to make sure that everyone is safely housed with their, their water and other basic utilities on and that the city continues to be a great partner in that. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Welcome, Nicholas, followed by David.
Thank you for letting me speak again. First of all, I want to strongly and aggressively and joyfully second everything that Sarah just said. It's not good enough to just pause. You need to actually let people know that you're doing it for all of the reasons that, that Sarah pointed out and also just for general stress reasons. The, I mean, it's actually much harder work being poor than it is being, you know, middle income or wealthy because you have to basically make, you have to perform a balancing act with every single penny that you spend. And so if the city is going to do this, then it's, it's your fault and you need to fix it. The other thing that I want to mention is the issue, sorry, you guys discussed transit a lot. So transit is near and dear to my heart. So it pains me greatly to see you all talk about it so stupidly. There's no other way to put it. So several of you mentioned the necessity of having means testing for various services that the city would provide in terms of transportation, which is absolutely the wrong way to do it. And the reason why is because as been shown time and time again, in fact, there's a very good person, I wish I could remember her name. I couldn't find it quickly enough, who is currently a fellow at the Oberman Center who studies hunger on campus and in the broader community. And they recently, the Oberman Center recently, not recently, a while ago, held a panel about hunger in the community. And one of the things that every single person on the panel said again and again, the more barriers you have to access a public service, the less likely it is going to be used by the very people who qualify for it. So if you means test all of these things, you're actually going to be excluding a fairly large number of people who would even otherwise qualify. So I would strongly, strongly, strongly suggest that you not means test these things for precisely that reason, for the same reason that you need to do the work of actually informing people that the, the shut offs are unpause because all of these things are what prevent people from actually getting the help that they need. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, David, followed by Nancy.
Thank you, Mayor. I was actually hoping to take a week off from talking to y'all. But Counsel Weiner just outright lied. And so if someone doesn't mention it, no one's going to know any better. She said she likes to honor the process of the TRC and respects the votes that come out of the commissions, which is not true at all. When the Human Rights Commission came to y'all with the recommendation that IFR have one seat at the table, they had an overwhelmingly positive vote of that. All of you voted no, except for Maz and I, maybe Counsel Thomas, I can't remember exactly. But certainly Counsel Weiner voted no against that and rejected what the commission brought to her with an overwhelming majority vote. So just wanted to point that out. I think what you meant to say, Counsel Weiner, is that you're, you're happy to support the commissions that come from the city as long as they support the status quo and support what you already want, which is making sure that power does not shift to the most marginalized people in this community. Thank you.
Please do not put words in my mouth.
Thank you, David. Welcome, Nancy, followed by Mohammed.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight, Mayor Teague and council members. This is Nancy Byrd. I'm the Executive Director of the Iowa City Downtown District. And I'd like to share a couple of updates with you. One of our goals this year is to do more sharing of downtown updates with, with the city council to keep you as leaders of our city informed of the things that may pique your interest. I want to start with a thank you to city staff for accommodating our request to take a closer look at ways to make downtown more friendly in the winter season. We will be meeting tomorrow with city staff in the Department of Public Works, Transportation, and Neighborhood and Development Services, as well as the Building, Engineering, and Permitting Divisions, all of which touch at some level the sidewalk cafe and parklet permits. We will be reviewing case studies of other areas of the country to see different examples and opportunities for more winter life around cafes and plazas. Flexibility is a key ingredient for resiliency. By walking through this exercise together, we hope this joint team can bring forward opportunities for year-round sidewalk cafes, additional outdoor opportunities for eating out, seeking methods to streamline the permitting process and building a stronger downtown destination in the winter season. We also think that reimagining Dubuque Street between Iowa Avenue and Washington Street should be part of this conversation. It's planned for reconstruction in 2023, so that's down the road. But we hope to explore ways to reimagine Dubuque Street with lessons learned from the pandemic. How can Dubuque Street help add to the attraction of downtown in a more meaningful way? Can we strengthen the downtown gateway? Can we review opportunities for bollards, curbless streets, master cafes, and a stronger connection with the adjacent alley? For those of you who love streetscapes, it would be great to connect on, on this topic on one-on-one level as well. On a separate topic, we've been working with Jeff Ruin and some of the planning staff on one of the, our recovery objectives to help support the restaurant industry and get back on their feet. We've met as a board to support a restaurant exception that could support later restaurant service past the midnight hour. As background, in 2010, the city created new definitions of drinking and eating establishments to make way for the 500-foot rule whereby a bar cannot locate within 500 feet of another bar. In doing so, the city needed to clarify the difference between eating and drinking establishments. The city established that restaurants would be defined by their hours of operation. If you close at 12:00 a.m., you were a restaurant. So today, restaurants still have to close by 12:00 a.m., except under special circumstances, even though the state of Iowa provides a liquor license that allows alcohol service to 2:00 a.m. For those of you that know restaurateurs, this would be an excellent time to reach out and get their input. They may be reaching out to you as well because there's a lot of conversation around this topic currently. So I'm hoping that, you know, this conversation can remain productive. And as you know, there are a variety of opinions around the management of nightlife. We as an organization are doing our very best to help guide those conversations to support a vibrant and healthy nightlife as we move forward in the conversation. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Welcome Commissioner Trey O'Ray followed by Maya.
Thank you, Mayor Teague. I just wanted to echo an earlier sentiment about the aspect of means testing and I just wanted to include the fact that if the city is going to look into means testing that a major issue with it is that things such as remittance payments that many, that many immigrants do are pretty much not ever looked at. When it comes to things such as, I mean, my own father worked two full-time jobs the entire time I was growing up. And, you know, he slept just a few hours every day. And he would make about seventy, seventy-five thousand dollars a year, but if something like that was means tested, would that make him seem like he is like some wealthier person? Meanwhile, he was sending a vast majority of that money back to Africa to a lot of my family that is still living in Mud Hood villages. And I'm not saying this to say that I'm in some extraordinary position, but to say that there are many, many immigrants and, and first, first generation in first generation US citizens in this very city and in the surrounding area. So if we are going to means test things, we really need to look at things such as remittance payments and realize that some number that is put on a tax document doesn't say anything and everything when it comes to exactly how much a person can afford to have and exactly how much a person deserves. And at the end of the day, when people are paying in tax dollars to get the goods and services back from their city and their state. And I look at things right now such as our, our own state government hoarding so much of, of the tax money that has been paid in. And they say it's for things such as rainy day funds. Well, we're currently in a rainy day situation and I don't hear anything about means testing from the state government. So I just have a hard time believing that if we're to hand over all power to, for things such as means testing to governmental bodies, that the correct decisions will always be made and that all factors will always be looked at equally. Thank you.
Thank you, welcome Maya.
Good evening. I would like to speak on the work sessions supplemental transit options discussion. First of all, I just want to say that I'm so grateful we are finally making this move towards Sunday service. It has been a long needed thing for our community and I know that it will be able to provide services for people who have needed them for a long time. With that being said, I would like to encourage each council member to pursue late night service as well. I support what Nicholas and Mohammed have said on this matter and think that the goal should be to fill the gaps that the system is not providing. Darian presented a lot of numbers of possible riders being helped by expanding this service. And it should be the goal of this council to provide as much of that transit as possible. So I really hope going forward, you'll keep second and third shift low-income workers in mind. And remember that transit should be a right for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address any topic that is not on our agenda? Seeing no one. We are moving on to planning and zoning matters, item 10A. Resonant 2525 Highlander Place Ordinance Resonant Pop Property Located at 2525 Highlander Place to Highway Commercial to CH dash one with a historic overlay. This is second consideration and staff has requested expedited action.
I move that the rule requiring the ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed, to be suspended, that the second consideration vote be waived and the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
All right, would anyone from the public like to address this topic?
I'm not on mute.
Seeing no one, council discussion. Roll call please.
Ms.
Yes.
Sully.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Could I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved Ms.
Second, Thomas.
Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Please raise your hand. Council discussion. Roll call please.
Sully. Yes. Taylor. Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yeah.
Weiner.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Ms.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 11, Restaurant Definition Change for Outdoor Service Areas and Ordinance Amending Title Four Entitled Alcohol, Alcoholic Beverages, Chapter One Entitled Definitions, to revise the definition of a restaurant for outdoor services area. This is first consideration. Could I get a motion please? And staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Daniel Sisman, Neighborhood and Development Services. No slides tonight, just a quick presentation on this one. This is an ordinance that will change the definition of restaurant used for outdoor service areas. Those are areas that are located on private property, either in a rear or side or rooftop of a building. They are not our sidewalk cafes that are in public right-of-way. The proposed ordinance would remove the reference to specific kitchen equipment that may not be needed for certain types of food preparation and align our definition with the full-service food establishment as certified by the Johnson County Health Department. As I said, these are areas located on private property, not in the fronts of buildings. They all are currently regulated for things like screening from a public view, a limit on their occupancy, a limit on the amount of noise and a plan to handle noise. Some of our additional zoning districts have even further specific restrictions. All of those restrictions would remain in place. This is simply, like I said, a change to the definition of what's required in the kitchen. Our current definition requires a slew of equipment, like I said, that is not necessarily required for the kind of food prep that would be appropriate for the menu that an establishment might provide. And also really didn't provide any useful definitions of what that equipment is. So as I said, this would be revising that definition to include adequate kitchen equipment be provided for food, basic food requirements for, for, for an establishment. This only comes into play when a kitchen or restaurant is required to be a component. Not every outdoor service area is required to even have a kitchen. Have it answer questions.
Seeing no questions. Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one, council discussion. Roll call please.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Ms.
Yes.
Sully.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 12, Abandoned Vehicle Towing Process. Ordinance Amendment Title Nine Entitled Motor Vehicles to provide that the process for towing and pounding and reclaiming of abandoned vehicles is consistent with the Iowa code. This is second consideration and staff requests expedited action. I'm sorry, we, your, your mic is on mute.
Sorry, I thought I had it done. I move that the rule requiring the ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed, to be suspended, that the second consideration vote be waived and be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second.
Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand. Council discussion. Roll call please.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Ms.
Yes.
Sully.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Could I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved Thomas.
Second.
Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Please raise your hand. Council discussion. Roll call please.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Ms.
Yes.
Sully.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes, motion passed at seven to zero. Item 13, Resolution Accepting Dedication of Right-of-Way. Resolution Accepting Dedication of Right-of-Way of Adjacent to Lot Eight, Block Four, St. Matthias Addition. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved Burgess.
Second, Ms.
Staff presentation please.
I can just speak to this. You'll recall with the, with the recent development up on St. Matthias Addition that there was a vacation and a and, and an authorization to dedicate right of way to the, to the owner of that property, Wade Investments, to facilitate a drive-through coffee development, I believe. In the course of reviewing the site plan, staff determined Public Works, I believe that approximately a hundred of square feet of land should be rededicated as public right-of-way. So this just does that. And we'll clean it all up in the final conveyance.
Thank you. Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? Council discussion. Roll call please.
Weiner.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Ms.
Yes.
Sully. Sully.
Mayor Pro Tim.
You know, disconnect somehow, everybody, I just hear Weiner and that's it. I didn't hear anything after that. But yes, yes.
Okay.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. We are at item number 14, which is council appointments. 14A Board of Adjustment, Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2025. Council discussion.
I'll, I'll start, Mayor. I, I really couldn't get a good sense of this person from his application form. It, it seemed to lack a little bit of content that would give me some idea of how, why he felt the interest commission. And I'm also kind of concerned about the gender balance. I, I realize that we're past the deadline to consider gender, but, but it does currently have a bit of a lopsided balance there. So I would like to recommend holding off on this appointment for now.
Let's see, some shaking of, shaking of head. Are people in agreement to hold off? Well, we're posted and go from there. All right. Item number 15. So this item is being, do we need to actually defer this or it's okay to just?
I think you can just direct.
To city, city clerk.
Be advertised and you'll consider it at the next meeting.
Yes. What she said, no. Please, city, city clerk, please advertise this and we'll consider any new applications at the next meeting. Thank you. Item number 15 is applicant, is announcement of vacancies new? Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, April 13th, 2021. Human Rights Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, April 13th, 2021. And then announcements of vacancies previous. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Civil Service Commission, one vacancy to fill a four-year term. April's, applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, March 9th, 2021. Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Board of Appeals, Licensed Electrician, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, East College Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, North Side, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, Wood Lawn, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Senior Center Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Telecommunications Commission, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. And we're at item number 17, which is community comment by Ryan Longnecker. Welcome. If he is here. Or Anna.
Mayor, it's, university took like a, a mental health holiday. I don't know if it's called a holiday, but neither one of them joined the meeting tonight.
Great, thank you. We will move on to item number 18. City council information, any updates from counselors? No updates, all right. Any updates from our city manager? We're at item number 19, reports from city staff. Any reports, city manager?
No update, Mayor.
Our assistant, city manager?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
City attorney? We read your lips.
Nothing from me, thank you.
All right, our city clerk?
Nothing from me.
Could I get a motion to adjourn, which is item number 20?
Happy to do it for the 46-minute meeting. Breaking the record, move.
All right, all in favor say aye.
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 Any oppose? We are adjourned. Enjoy your evening. See you next time.